City of Birmingham, we're here for the regular scheduled meeting of the Birmingham City Council, virtual meeting, April 6, 2021, at 9:30 a.m. We're going to have our invocation by Counsel Hilliard and the Pledge of Allegiance by Counsel Hord, but before we doing that, I do want to express our thoughts and prayers with the Yarborough family and all the other victims and their families throughout the city of Birmingham. It was a tough weekend, but just wanted to know our thoughts and prayers on behalf of the city, city council, and as we move forward. So anyway, with that, Counsel Hilliard?
Yes, may we bow our heads. Gracious Father, if we ever needed you, Father God, we need you now. Father God, we ask you to heal our city, Father God of crime, Father God. Father God, we ask you to touch the hearts of many of our constituents around this city, Father God, so that we may reach out and be loving neighbors, Father God. Father God, we ask you to touch this state, this country and the nation and heal it, Father God, of this surge of this virus, Father God. Father God, we ask you to strengthen the minds of my colleagues, Father God, so that we may have the wisdom, Father God, and the knowledge to lead this city in the way that it should go. Father God, we ask you to touch each and every one of our constituents, Father God, and throughout City Hall, Father God, heal each and every one of us, Father God, so we may have the strength to carry out thy work and to do thy bidding, Father God. This we ask in Jesus's name, let us all say amen. Amen. All right.
Mr. President, you're muted, thank you.
Okay, all right, Counsel Hord, good morning, you're going to lead us with the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, if not, if everyone could please stand.
I pledge the flag of the United States of America.
Okay, good morning, Mr. Clark, how are you?
How are you?
Good morning, sir, good morning.
Counsel member Abbott.
Present.
Counsel member Hilliard.
Present.
Counsel member Hord. Counsel member Hord. Counsel member O'Quinn.
Good morning.
Morning, sir. Counsel member Smithman.
Good morning.
Morning. Counsel member Williams.
Good morning.
Good morning. Counsel member Woods. Counsel member Woods.
Present.
Counsel, President Pro Tim Alexander.
Good morning, President.
President Parker.
Good morning, good morning, Mr. Clark.
Good morning.
All right, the minutes are now ready for September 29, 2020 through March 30, 2021. We've got to move to the consent agenda, Mr. Clark. And...
Let me see.
I think there was one item.
Let me see if I had any boards or agencies right quick.
Okay, all right, and while you're doing that, I think, Mr. Clark, there was a reference to item 17, there was an additional item that needs to come with that, with item 17.
Yes, sir.
Okay, it's a...
We're waiting on the language on that.
Yeah, I don't know, yeah, if it's a... We can, as we going through the consent agenda, just provide that information.
Okay, I'll post it if it pops up here.
Okay, on item 7.
The consent agenda starts on page... Looks like three, I mean, sorry, two, with item number two. Page three, item three is on consent. Page four, items four and five are on consent. Page five, items six and seven are on consent. Page six, item number eight is on consent. Page nine, items nine and 10 are on consent. Page eight, we have items 11 and 12 on consent. And then we skip over to page 10, we have item number 15 on consent. Page 11, we have items 17 and 18 on consent. Page 12, items 19, 20, and 21, 22, and 23 are on consent. Page 13, items 24, 25, 26, 27, and 28 are on consent. Page 14, items 29, 30, 31, 32, and 33 are on consent. Page 15, we have items 34, 35, 36, 37 on consent. Page 16, we have items 38, 39, 40, and 41 on consent. And now, page 17, we have item number 42 on consent. And as you mentioned, we have, it looks like, three addendum items, the travel and I guess that will be a budget ordinance dealing with item number 17, but project taking the vote, Mr. President.
Yeah, I need to read them, I need to read the...
Items.
Yeah, I'll read that in a second.
Can you do me a favor before we take that vote, we need to just lay the consent agenda on the table and then take that vote.
Okay, you need a motion.
After, after people withdraw, whatever they want to do with the consent.
Okay, all right, um... Well, so Abbott, I'm just trying to...
Put the table, the consent agenda.
We'll handle it after everyone takes the action for removing or placing other items on, we'll do it then, if that's possible, thank you.
Do you have the other, the other addendum item, Mr. Clark?
Oh, let's see.
I think number...
Uh, not yet.
Okay, all right, what we'll do is, we will, item 44 is the travel request to Montgomery. I sent an email out about that, so we'll make that number 44, we'll take that one up now. I'll ask to put that one on consent. Are there other items, 43, can we put that one on consent?
What is 43?
That's dealing with the majesty classic.
I didn't see, I didn't see that one come through email.
Uh, it came yesterday, I think, Mr. and Ms. Leitha sent that one out. It's, I think she sent it out on yesterday afternoon.
Okay, I found it.
Okay.
They come from a variety of people, is there any way that we can get them in a package instead of piecemealing it?
Instead of coming, it needs to either come from Mr. Lee or from Ms. Leitha, is that...
Yeah, like, put them all together and say, here are the addenda for...
Okay.
Yeah. They should come from the clerk's office, we'll handle that, Counsel, thank you for that.
Okay, all right, so we're good with that. All right, so, Mr. Clark, now, I need a motion to lay the consent agenda on the table.
So, we're not going 45, I still hadn't, so I guess we'll deal with it when we get there.
We'll deal with that later, yeah.
Yes, sir, okay, give me one second.
So, Clark, I have, I'm about to send it to you right now.
Okay, motion to lay the consent agenda.
Okay, uh, we need that motion to delay.
Second.
Okay, uh, this is to lay the consent agenda on the table, Counsel member Abbott.
Aye.
Counsel member Hilliard. Counsel member Hilliard. Counsel member Hord. Counsel member O'Quinn.
Aye.
Counsel member Smithman.
Aye.
Counsel member Williams.
Aye.
Counsel member Woods. Counsel member Woods. Counsel member Woods, Counsel President Pro Tim Alexander.
Aye.
Counsel President Parker.
Hi, Woods is here, I said hi.
Okay, sorry.
Here, and Hilliard is here, and I said aye.
Okay, all right, okay, the Council of the City of Birmingham having reviewed the agenda presented for this meeting on April 6, 2021, hereby finds that the proposed actions contained on the agenda to be considered at this meeting constitute essential minimum functions of this body. So I need a motion.
Move.
Second. Second.
One second here, is that to lay it on the table, right? Uh, no, sir, just to go ahead and pass this item, the consent agenda is laid on the table.
Okay, okay.
All right, thank you. Yes, sir, this is for the essential items function. Uh, one second, so, with that, Counselor Smithman and I missed...
It was Counsel Williams for the first.
Okay, thank you.
For the first motion.
And Counsel Smithman, second, essential items. All right, one second. Okay, Counsel member Abbott.
Aye.
Counsel member Hilliard.
Aye.
Counsel member Hord.
Yes.
Counsel member O'Quinn.
Yes.
Counsel member Smithman.
Aye.
Counsel member Williams.
Aye.
Counsel member Woods. President Pro Tim Alexander.
Aye.
Counsel President Parker.
Yes, okay. Now, I need to read the other consideration of consent agenda, that should give us another minute or so, and then we'll vote on the consent.
Motion to on table, consent, bring it back to the floor.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Second.
Okay, item is back before you, so...
Okay, all items designated as consent or routine and non-controversial will be approved by one motion, no separate discussion of these items will be permitted unless a Counsel member, the mayor, or citizen... Just, Hord, you might want to meet your phone. Interested in public hearings or requests, if so, such items or items will revert to its normal place on the agenda or to business. All matters of permanent operation will be read, all other matters will be announced by reading the item number only, all public hearings will be announced. So now, we're ready to vote on the consent agenda. Mr. Clark, ready to vote?
I need a motion to approve.
Second.
Counsel Abbott and second was... Yes, President. Smithman?
Alexander.
Alexander, okay. Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Mr. President, yeah, item 17, you take it all consent, please.
Okay, all right.
Okay.
Okay, all right. Okay, all right, we're ready to vote, Mr. Clark.
All right, Counsel member Abbott.
Aye.
Counsel member Hilliard.
Aye.
Counsel member Hord.
Yes.
Counsel member O'Quinn. I see you, okay, Counsel member Smithman.
Aye.
Counsel member Williams.
Aye.
Counsel member Woods.
Aye.
Counsel President Pro Tim Alexander.
Aye.
Counsel President Parker.
Aye, okay, all right, consent agenda passes, okay. All righty, so what we have is item 45 and 17, it will deal as a companion item, but right now, we could go to item 16, I just want to go to, we can skip around and go to item 16, and then we'll get back into normal operations.
Item 16?
Yes, sir.
All right, give me a sec, item 16... It's on page 11 of your hard copy, in ordinance, to require face coverings on masks in public in the city of Birmingham during the COVID-19 public health emergency and recovery. And as outlined by legal, this is an item of permanent operation, I need UC to entertain passage today. A motion for UC.
Second.
Counsel member Abbott.
Aye.
Counsel member Hilliard.
Aye.
Counsel member Hord.
Yes.
Counsel member O'Quinn.
Yes.
Counsel member Smithman.
Aye.
Counsel member Williams.
Aye.
Counsel member Woods.
Aye.
Counsel President Pro Tim Alexander.
Aye.
Counsel President Parker.
Aye, okay, now, we are ready, the, my item is before us.
You hear a motion? I didn't hear the, who made the motion?
Mr. O'Quinn.
Okay, thank you. All right, I didn't hear it for you.
Okay, all right. Counsel Williams. Okay, anybody, Counsel, okay.
Yeah, thank you, President Parker. I'd add some questions for, I guess, legal, on section 6.2, is this saying that we're not going to require central coverings in churches?
Good morning, Counsel Williams, I have attorney Julie Bernard on screen, Julie, are you available to answer?
I am, unmuted and trying to get my video started. Um, it is the, uh... They are, should be required, but if the mask is interfering with the, with the worship, then, um, you know, there, there is a religious allowance there, that is carried over, that is how the state order was written on and recommended of the Attorney General, so, we've carried that over. But, you know, for example, if you're taking communion in church, obviously, while you're eating and drinking at a restaurant, you have to remove your mask to do that. But the strong recommendation is continue to use masks when you're gathering, but if it's interfering with the activity that you're doing, you can take it off for that period.
Okay, I was just surprised because I didn't see that in the original mask ordinance that we passed, but I guess that's because it was, that's continued over from the governor's order, right?
Correct.
Okay. So...
You have other questions, Counselor, or...
No, if the mayor wants to go ahead, he can go ahead, but yeah, I do.
Good morning, good morning, sir.
Morning, Mr. President, morning, Counsel.
Yes, sir, good morning.
Actually, I apologize, Counsel Williams, I was trying to get the attention of the President, I thought you were done, I'm young, for you, very patient.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, the only thing that I'd like to point out about this is that what this ordinance effectively does, as you know, we already have the federal mandate that requires face mask in any type of public facility that's, that has federal funding, such as public transportation, airports, buses, bus stations, hospitals, nursing homes, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, that will remain in place regardless of us passing this or not, but it essentially limits people wearing masks, and then obviously, we have bars and restaurants where you're not required to wear masks, but this essentially makes it so where that people have to wear a mask in outdoor entertainment activities, so if there's an outdoor concert, if there's an outdoor sporting event, things of that nature, as well as just being outside, which I think is, you know, which is ridiculous. Obviously, there is a lot of common sense that needs to be used with masks, big box stores will probably continue to allow, to require them rather, but it does seem that, that, you know, we have 32 municipalities in Jefferson County, and having just one have an order where people have to wear masks does not, is not really effective, and we know that our, from the phone call that we had, where I only saw you, President Parker, on with the state health off, with the Dr. Harris, the state health officer yesterday, you know, it's not the state's recommendation that we do this, and also, the Jefferson County Health Department, it, it's not so much of the recommendation of them that they feel like that they need to enact it countywide. So, also, from the Birmingham Business Alliance survey that we were all sent yesterday, I think that the main thing that stands out to me is one succinct statement that was given, and it's this, "In order for businesses to survive downtown and begin to thrive again, we need people to come back to downtown. If there are additional restrictions downtown that are not in other parts of Birmingham, meaning the Birmingham metro, people will choose to go to other places. This also puts a lot of stress on all employees and businesses that serve customers to continue to enforce mask policies, especially when they're not required in other places." So, you know, I know that I'm going to be the sole vote in a different direction on this, but it, you know, we, we've had conversations with, with, with businesses, with state health officials, and they don't feel like they need to enact it in Jefferson County, they don't feel like it needs to be enacted statewide, and we have 31 other municipalities not enacting this in the county. So, I do think it puts an undue burden on both business owners in the city of Birmingham, as well as for outdoor events, sporting events, things of that nature. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Williams. Mr. Mayor, good morning, sir, how are you?
Again, good morning, Mr. President, good morning to the council, just, just three quick notes, well, actually, three notes plus some commentary, and I'll start the commentary first. City of Birmingham has always led on the issue around doing what's necessary from a health crisis standpoint over the last year. I think the Counsel's point about the other municipalities in the county, you know, they didn't take this to the last time. Here's where we... The first note, Mr. President and Counsel, is our local health experts, and so, when we speak to UAB health official, when we speak to Jefferson County health officials, they are both recommending that masks are still needed. April 9 is just arbitrary date to stop, that hasn't stopped the coronavirus from being in our community. The second note is, after small business owners have continued to send texts, or when they see me in person and or email to say, "Mayor, we, we need this ordinance," because, you know, "we don't want to have these interactions with citizens or potential patrons who won't be in compliance with us, and so, we want the city to intervene." But the third most important thing, let's be very clear about what's happening here in our community. Majority of our citizens in the city of Birmingham have not had access to or have taken the vaccination. And I don't, I do care that the numbers are declining, but that has not stopped people from getting the coronavirus, that has not stopped people from being admitted to hospitals, and it has not stopped people from dying. People are still dying, people are still being admitted to the hospital, people are still getting the coronavirus, and enough people have not had the vaccine, whether it's access or it's just taking or whatever it is. Therefore, Birmingham does not have the luxury to watch what everybody else is doing, because they may wear a mask political. What we're doing is, is doing what we've been doing since day one, which I'm very grateful to this entire council, which is saving lives. This decision we make to save lives may not necessarily be popular, but they are the right thing to do, and I know the majority of the people in the city of Birmingham support this effort. Now, there's a question, and I will go ahead and answer this question about enforcement. It's pretty simple, actually. Small business owners, or any business owner, anybody that owns a place of business, when you walk into their place, they have a right to refuse you for not wearing a face mask. And the only time BPD will engage is if it reaches the point where the employer or the business owner says this person is either trespassing or has become disorderly in the form of disorderly conduct. And so, the city of Birmingham is not going to go around, you know, doing things that are not necessary, we're just going to practice common sense, and when, once somebody engages us with a business owner, for someone refusing, and that behavior reaches the point of trespass or disorderly conduct, we will gladly engage this president, I think that's pretty much my remarks, sir.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Are there others? Counsel Williams, have any? You're good, okay, all right.
President.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, um, thank you for recognizing me, I just wanted to respond and say that I've received correspondence from constituents arguing both sides of this, however, I, I'm going to be voting in favor of extending the face covering ordinance, and I want to say that in, in response to the commentary that Counsel Williams provided, you know, part of what I have heard from constituents is, is that they really appreciate the fact that the city of Birmingham is, is an oasis in a otherwise, you know, sort of Wild West situation where they feel like, you know, the restaurants and, and other businesses in the city of Birmingham that are adhering to requiring mask is allowing them to patronize those businesses. So, you know, you have folks that are going to go either way, you know, they're, they're not going to patronize a business because they require a mask, and other people are, are going to be exactly the opposite. It's a place that is where, you know, everyone is putting their own concerns and themselves aside and thinking about the community around them, and, and, and doing, you know, taking on a little inconvenience for themselves, and thinking about the safety of others. So, I just wanted to, you know, provide that balance that there, you know, maybe a few people that decide that they don't want to come downtown, an area that I represent, because we are requiring face masks, but I feel like the majority of folks who I have heard from are appreciative of the fact that we're considering this and will likely pass this ordinance, thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you, Dr. Quinn, are there others? Yes, sir, good morning, sir.
Good morning, Mr. President, and to my distinguished colleagues, it is just, my heart is just bursting with joy to see us protect our citizens at all costs. Of course, we all believe in economics and development, and we want our city to thrive, but even as late as this morning, you could listen to the news and hear that there's fights in Detroit, Michigan, and other places where the virus is thriving. I look, I'm just excited, the fact that we're doing everything we can to protect lives, and we're sending out a message, even to the other surrounding areas, that we must protect our citizens at all cost. And with that said, Mr. President, I appreciate my colleagues and the others for, for reaching out and the mayor, for saving lives and looking out for the best interests of our residents. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else? Counsel Hord or Counsel Abbott?
I think I hit my wave hand up or whatever, but, yeah, I wanted to say and kind of revisit the smoking ordinance, when we were told that they were not going to patronize these businesses if they couldn't smoke, and, you know, and that's been, oh, 10 years ago, I think, we did that, and nothing has changed about that, people got used to not smoking in restaurants, and it's saving lives as well. And I think the mask has the propensity to save lives, even at a greater level, and if you don't have anything in place, then you, you would not want to think about the alternative to that, because people still being exposed and, and things of that nature. And of course, I do like what one of our citizens has written to say that, you know, we don't need to do another ordinance that we're not going to enforce summarily, and, and that's the piece that we got to rely on is enforcement, and if persons don't have masks when they enter a restaurant, then that's a problem, and that's a problem not only for them, but it's a problem for everybody in the restaurant. And so, we, we're going to have to put some teeth in it to ensure that they are going to police this, and I, and I would even suggest that the restaurant have somebody to, to monitor that, and if people enter without a mask, then, then they, they, you know, they need to let them go, go back to the cars, as I see it.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. President.
There were others, right? Yes, sir.
I think that Mr. Hord actually made a very good point around enforcement, and I agree with him wholeheartedly. I hate that we have, I hate that we have ordinances on our books that we don't enforce, and the problem with specific ordinance, when you read it, the people that have to enforce it... it, it specifically says that small business owners are the ones for enforcing it with which they don't want to be in the business of enforcing it. They either want to have the rule or not. So Mr. Boyd made a very good point.
Okay. The others, anybody else have anything to say?
Parker.
Yes, ma'am.
President Parker.
Yes, sir. Can we go Counsel, Counsel Abbott and then Counsel Smith?
Yes, I think Counsel Smith and I Counsel Smith and I are probably waiting, wondering if we want to say anything or not. But I have to say that I, I do agree with, with Dr. O'Quinn. You know, this, this ordinance is for the protection of the people who come to Birmingham, whether they live here or whether they're outside. And we do have enormous numbers of people who haven't been vaccinated yet. They're not protected. When you wear a mask, it's not to protect you, it's to protect other people from you. We would hope that people would be kind and considerate to their fellow man. And maybe they're not because they haven't lost any family members. Maybe no friends are sick and can't get well because they're long haulers. You know, maybe they don't know anybody who's been affected and that's why they're inconsiderate and uncaring of other people. It's sad that we have to re-up this mask ordinance that people aren't responsible enough to take care of their fellow man as well as themselves. But that's just the situation we're in and, and we're elected to make tough decisions. Yes, there are some businesses that will be hurt by having masks in Birmingham and not other places. But as Dr. O'Quinn said, there are people who are coming to Birmingham because they feel safer here than in places where it's the wild, wild west and everybody just does as they darn well please. So I, I think that this is an important vote. I think that, as I said, we have to make tough choices. This is yes or no. It's not maybe. So I'm in favor of it. I think we need to protect people. I've lost family members and I don't think there's any humor to it at all. And these long haulers, people who've had it and a year, over a year later, they're still sick. You know, this is no joke. And now that younger people are getting this new variant, the young people aren't even safe. And they thought they were bulletproof and look what happened. So I think this is an important vote for us and we're simply trying to take care of our folks.
Yes, ma'am. Counsel Smith and then President Pro Tim Alexander.
Yeah, thank you, President Parker. Um, first thing I'm gonna say, just wear the mask. Like, it, it's, it's really not that complicated. Like, it's a mask, just wear it. I'm talking about in general. Like, it's not, it's a mask. Like, of all the things you have to do throughout the day, just wear a mask. And I think it's not only because of COVID, but the flu, for example. The flu has gone very deadly. The mask can help you with the flu. Uh, pollen. I don't know about you guys. I have really bad allergies. Very, very bad allergies. Like, I, I get allergic reactions to everything. The mask will help with that. And like Counsel Abbott said, it's not about you, it's about other people. Right? So if you don't live in Birmingham and you come to work in Birmingham, you may live in a municipality where it's a little bit easier for you to get the vaccine, right? But as you've seen President Parker, Counsel Hillyer, Counsel Boyd, all of us trying to advocate for vaccinations, we have a lot of underserved communities in Birmingham who have not had access to the vaccine yet. So you have to think about it. Somebody's not vaccinated, they're very, very likely to get COVID. And even with the vaccine, you're still likely to get COVID. You just may not have as severe symptoms. It's just wear the mask, like continue to do it with small businesses, Counsel Williams, maybe we can do something to help them out. Maybe we can figure out a solution, but just wear the mask. It'd be different if we were all vaccinated, but we're not. It's really just about protecting each other and making sure that, for example, our grandparents feel comfortable enough to be around us, that the elderly feels comfortable around us, that people who have underlying conditions are protected. So I'm in favor for it. I really think of all the issues that we're dealing with in today's society, wearing a mask is minimal. So thank you, President Parker.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Counsel Smith. President Pro Tim Alexander.
Thank you, Ms. Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to start by thanking each of my colleagues for your leadership and just discussing this topic and wanting to be sure that our residents are safe during this pandemic. I know we talk about, and I thank the mayor for his comments about the leadership of the city of Birmingham and how we've always gone out and been a leader in taking on issues. And so even though we may have our surrounding municipalities and our surrounding counties that may not be willing to take this leadership, let's keep in mind that Jefferson County does have the highest count of COVID cases currently. So we are looking at a pandemic within our own area. And so we want to take that leadership. Majority of all of my residents in District Seven, we live in Jefferson County. So I want to ensure that we are stepping out and taking this leadership role and wanting to protect everyone. I appreciate the comments regarding the enforcement and from the citizen as well as the counselors regarding being sure we put teeth in our ordinances or in our codes that we already have. We not only need to be sure of enforcement of this one, but we have code enforcement issues that we don't necessarily always enforce. If we could just keep people from doing things as far as trash and other items. So I, I appreciate that. But let's look at our small business owners. This responsibility is no different than if I'm a club owner and I want to ensure that no one doesn't drink too much and gets out there and drives drunk. Or if there becomes a safety issue in my establishment where I need to call for enforcement by the police to help me maintain the safety of my patrons. So I am, I am really again encouraged by the advocacy of our council members and of our city and wanted to take this on. And Ms. Smithman said it most, it, it's not rocket science. Just wear the mask. Just wear the mask. And we've seen the benefit of it so far, even if not for COVID, but as she said, when it comes to flu, the pollen, it, it, it's really just a no-brainer. So I thank each of you this morning as we take on this issue. Thank you, Mr. President.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Thank you. Are there others?
Mr. President.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
I just, I just, I thought of something that I think is a little bit humorous. You know, almost all stores and restaurants say, no shirt, no shirt, no shoes, no service. Now, when did anybody ever complain about not being able to go into a restaurant with no shirt on or no shoes? They didn't make a big deal about that. But the mask is a big deal. I, I'm still trying to figure that one out. Thank you.
Restaurants are y'all going to in Birmingham that have to say no shoes, no shirt, no service?
It's kind of sad.
Counsel Williams, you're good? Okay, all right. Um, we're ready to vote, Mr. Clark.
You're not good, but we gonna, we gonna make him a believer.
We gonna make him a believer.
Okay.
All right.
Counsel Member Abbott?
Aye.
Counsel Member Hillyer?
Aye.
Counsel Member Boyd?
Yes.
Counsel Member O'Quinn?
Yes.
Counsel Member Smith?
Aye.
Counsel Member Williams?
No.
Counsel Member Woods?
Yes.
President Pro Tim Alexander?
Aye.
Counsel President Paul?
Yes, okay. All right, that item passes. An ordinance, it will go in, it will go into effect through May twenty-fourth. All righty. Mr. Clark?
Would you like to go, sir?
Oh, we can just start back at the beginning.
Okay, item one. Item one, an ordinance to further mid-zoning district map of the city of Birmingham, case number Z A C two thousand and twenty dash twenty-five, to change zone, district boundaries from C B one contingency neighborhood business district to Q C two qualified general commercial district filed by Mashama Low, representing the owner, Teresa Hutton, with the property located at thirty-eight oh one Richard Ericton Junior Boulevard North, situated in the southeast quarter of section nineteen, Township seventeen South, ranks two west and hearing of our shit parties. This is second reading and this is a public hearing item. Any persons who wish to speak for or against this item may do so by joining the meeting. Before council using the link provided, please use the hand raise function on WebEx to request to speak to this agenda item. Audio conference number is one four one five six five five zero 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 two and the access code is one eight seven five 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 four eighty-six thirty-five. If you are calling via telephone, please press star three to request to speak to this agenda item. Motion on the item, please.
Move the item. Second.
Uh, missed the second. Who was the second?
That was Valerie.
Thank you.
Sorry, I had a frog in my throat.
All right, I had it missed before you.
Yeah, good, good morning, Mr. Gambrell. I think that could be.
Yes, sir. Good morning.
Good morning. How are you doing?
Very well. How are you?
Very fine.
This is Tim Gambrell, serving as chief planner for the city of Birmingham. And this is Z A C two thousand and twenty dash twenty-five in the East Birmingham neighborhood. Proposed use is a bar slash lounge. The subject property is point zero one four acres and currently zoned C B one contingency neighborhood district. Abutting the subject property to the north is Sentinel Firearms, zoned M two. To the south of the property are single-family homes, zoned R three. To the east of the property is zoned C B one contingency neighborhood district. West of the site is Warren Manufacturing Incorporated, zoned O and I. The applicant's plan is to utilize the existing structure as a bar lounge called The Vibe. Hours of operation between five P M. and three A M. Sunday through Saturday. The building is twelve hundred and fifty square feet and the zoning ordinance parking requires one space per one hundred square feet. Therefore, the applicant is meeting the parking requirement with thirteen parking spaces. This location was once a grocery store in the forties where neighbors shopped for goods and services. The city's long-range land use plan identifies the property as heavy manufacturing. This land use category allows for the development of heavy manufacturing. These uses typically require significant truck traffic into a rail connection. Uses in this district include heavy manufacturing, junkyard scrap metal processor, and some supporting uses included minor retail services, offices connected to the industrial use for serving an industrial park. No residential uses are allowed in this district. The proposed rezoning request is consistent with the long-range land use plan. However, the area to the south of this location is currently used as primarily single-family, which warrants the need to reevaluate the existing adopted land use plan. Adopted future land use plan, that is. The, the applicant's site plan shows thirteen parking spaces and therefore the applicant is meeting the requirements of the proposed zoning request. This property is located within the Eastern Area Framework Plan. The plan for this area has not been adopted. However, the rezoning request is not consistent with the proposed Eastern Area Framework Plan, nor has the implementation committee been informed. The East Birmingham Neighborhood Association held an executive meeting on October twenty-six, two thousand and twenty to review the proposed project and voted to not recommend the request. The vote was zero approve and one denied. This decision was for the following reasons. The rezoning of the property will not have an economic impact or stability for the residents in the community of East Birmingham. As mentioned in the future land use section above, this area has been evaluated as part of the Eastern Area Framework Plan and the plan recommends amending the future land use plan designation for the area south of this site since it is primarily used for single-family. Specifically, the plan recommends the area south of the site to be designated as residential medium. Considering these facts, staff believes that the subject property is better suited to neighborhood commercial. Therefore, the applicant's rezoning request is not consistent with the proposed future land use plan. And staff has determined that this request is not consistent with the proposed plan and therefore does not have merit for approval. The Zone Advisory Committee met at its regularly scheduled meeting on November seventeen, two thousand and twenty and voted to recommend approval of the applicant's request with the following Q conditions. Applicant shall comply with the site plan as submitted and approved by the Z A C. Applicant must comply with the landscaping buffer requirements of eight canopy trees, four under-story trees and thirty-two shrubs to divide the residential zoning. The Planning and Zoning Committee met at its regularly scheduled meeting on December sixteen, two thousand and twenty and voted to move the item forward with no recommendation, but also requested that the applicant meet with the neighborhood to discuss concerns they have with the proposed rezoning request prior to city council final approval. As a result of the Planning and Zoning Committee meeting on December sixteen, two thousand and twenty, the East Birmingham Neighborhood Association met on December twenty-third, two thousand and twenty to review the proposed project and voted to recommend the request. The vote was five approve and zero to deny. This decision was for the following reasons. The zoning of the property will have an economic impact for the residents and the community of East Birmingham. And that concludes the report.
Okay, is the applicant available, Mr. Gambrell?
Uh, I'm not sure if they are on the call or not. They were set notice, I know that.
Ms. Hutton, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I am not.
Or Ms. Low. I think it was filed by Ms. Low.
Yeah, Ms. Low, I believe, would be the one representing them. I do not see her on the on the panel. And I don't know if she's on the phone.
If we move for one week delay, it's for a two-week delay.
I think two weeks.
So move, Mr. President, for two weeks. Two weeks, okay.
Second.
All right. All right.
Uh, who was the second? The Council Member Pro Tim Alexander?
Smith.
Okay, Counsel Smith, my apologies. All right.
Okay.
She said, Ms. Low says she's here.
Aye.
Oh, she's here?
Yeah.
Okay, if Ms. Low is here, then, okay, where?
She said, yeah, she's in the private chat, chat.
Okay. Good morning.
Hello?
Can we see your face?
Morning, how are you doing?
I'm on here, but I can't show my face.
That, that's, we, we see you're here, so we're just, just, we'll wait momentarily. Can you hear us? Good morning, how you doing? Ms. Low?
Can't, um, oh, what is this?
If maybe you can just, we can just talk to you if you can't get your camera working, it's fine.
Okay, can you see me now?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, good morning. Good morning. Can't hear you, though, I don't think. We can't hear you.
Can't hear, okay, let's see.
Okay, I can hear you now. Good morning.
Good morning, I'm sorry. I'm not very computer savvy.
That, that's fine. Good morning. We had the recommendations read, but wanted to hear from you as the applicant a little bit about, you did go back and, and meet with, with Mr. Ramus, the neighborhood president, or?
Yes, I did.
Okay, can you tell us a little bit more? Just give us a brief overview of what you want to do with the proposed property?
Um, like I said, when I purchased, when I got the property, it was already set up like a bar lounge or whatever, so I just went and took it as that. And so that's what I was going to make it for, like a bar lounge, but it was going to be for older, older crowd. I didn't want to do younger people. It should be thirty and up. And it's not a club. It's just a place like you come, a bar where you come and look at the game or whatever. I got TVs in there or whatever. You just come and look at the game. It's not big enough. It's not big enough to be a club where people can just come in there and dance or whatever, but, you know, it's sitting areas in there.
All right. Do council members have questions or any? Okay, so, so what are your hours? Oh, go ahead, Counsel Boyd.
Yeah, I was, I'm, I'm always concerned when, when the council passes something against the the staff recommendation. And it looks like we're making an exception here, which all practical purposes, this is spot zoning. And, you know, and I don't go for spot zoning. And because I think it has an adverse effect on the community. And because I think it has a adverse effect on the community in the long run, so um, but that's, that's what I'm hearing. And I'm not in favor of the item for that reason.
Can I ask a question, Mr. Hoyt?
Yes.
I was, uh, you said that it's not, um, I mean, I know that it's right now not zoned for what I'm trying to do. So can you tell me, like, back in the nineteen nineties, was it ever zoned for that? Or we just didn't follow the rules back then, because there is a club next to me?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not, I'm not sure, and, and they, you know, it's really level to the individual council.
I got you.
You know, and, and, you know, some of us okay with spot zoning, some of us are not. And I've been consistent. And that doesn't mean it's not gonna pass. It's, you know, it very well could pass today. But I'm just saying for me, from my perspective, and as a, a planning professional, uh, I just, I've, I've seen the impact of this. Uh, particularly when it's adjacent to a residential area. Uh, so that's just me. But uh, but I applaud you uh, on your efforts and, and perhaps you, you know, you'll get the folks you need today. But I just, to my perspective, I can't. And I've been consistent in doing that, notwithstanding you being uh, this item being before us this morning.
Okay.
Okay, are there other council members that have questions? And also, um, I need to put a pause and just ask whether other members uh, of the public that would like to speak to this item, um. So one more time, there any uh, members of the public that would like to speak to item one? Okay. Alright, um, yes, sir.
Question for Mr. Gamble. The staff recommendation, um, can he explain that a little bit more specifically with the Eastern Area Framework Plan? What is the proposed zoning for uh, this area?
Yes, sir, um, so it is, um, it is kind of a, you know, a, a mix of uses there. Uh, you know, north, generally speaking, north and due east of this site, uh, you have old industrial sites. Uh, some of them that are heavy sites. Uh, but then, south of the site, um, there is still, uh, you know, dozens of homes, single-family homes um, that uh, we would have, had intended to uh, rezone as part of the proposal to have a um, a medium-density residential uh, that might allow for, say duplexes, that sort of thing. Uh, and then this particular site in that same recommendation uh, calls for that property to be re- rezoned to C one uh, or neighborhood commercial.
Thank you.
Okay, there are other questions? Any council members, okay? Alright, Ms. Low, just real quick, just, um, just wanna go back and make sure initially you went to the Neighborhood Association, uh, didn't receive a favorable and then you went back during the holidays, I guess through December, and had another meeting with members of the, of the uh, Neighborhood Association.
Right. Well, the first, you know, they, um, I think, um, Ms. Abbott didn't like the fact that it was only one person there. And, you know, it was like, how can you have a, um, a complete voting when you only have one person show up? Well, it was me and that one person, which was the neighborhood. So that's why they wanted me to go back and um, try to reschedule another one with more.
Okay, alright, and uh, just, I think moving forward, just uh, working with the, the neighborhood, with the Neighborhood Association, um, um, as far as just trying to partner on a lot of different initiatives, I think that's something we can probably through. Okay, alright, we'll, and we will follow up uh, on some things, okay? Are there any other members of the council? Um, if not, Mr. Clark, I think we're ready for a vote.
Okay, I get, uh, council here, you, you withdraw that deferral motion for me, please.
Yes, sir, Mr. President, yes, yes, I'd like to withdraw that motion.
Alright, thank you.
Okay, alright, and this is now on passage of item one. And there, we did read the Q conditions, um, okay.
Alright.
Alright, yeah, we're ready for vote, but.
Member Abbott.
Aye.
Councilmember Hillier.
Aye.
Councilmember Hoyt.
No.
Councilmember Quinn.
No.
Councilmember Smithman.
Aye.
Member Williams.
Aye.
Councilmember Woods.
Aye.
Council President Pro Tim Alexander.
Aye.
Council President Parker.
Aye. Thank you, that item passes. Um, next item, Mr. Clark.
I think that should be. Thirteen.
Yes, ma'am.
Alright, item thirteen. A resolution assenting to the vacation of thirteen thousand six hundred and fifteen square feet of right-of-way. Uh, unpaid, that is located perpendicular to and between Pawnee Avenue and Orgal Road, located at thirty-two hundred Orgal Road. On behalf of uh, Philip, Philipia McMillan, Bainbridge owner, so that the owner can consolidate property in the hearing of all parties, case number S U B two thousand and nineteen dash one. Again, this is a public hearing item. Any persons who wish to speak for or against this item may do so by joining the meeting. The full council is using the link provided. Please use the hand raise function on WebEx to request to speak to this agenda item. The audio conference number is one four one five six five five zero 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 two. And the access code is one eight seven five five five, five five four eighty-six thirty-five. If you're calling via telephone, please press star three to request to speak to this agenda item, a motion, please.
I live approval.
Second. Okay. Okay, good morning, Council Smithman.
Good morning, uh, is the applicant here? I guess not. Do any councils have any questions? Body on the call that's in the audience that has anything to say for or against?
Mrs. Smithman?
Yes.
This is Valerie Abbott. I just wanted to say this is in my district and it's an unopened right-of-way which has never been paved over or anything. And so I think that this, you know, maybe at one time there was an assumption this was going to be three separate pieces of property.
Yeah.
But the way it turned out is it's just one piece. And I certainly, um, support the applicant's request because it makes perfect sense.
Yeah, I agree.
And, and I assume that any unopened alley or right-of-way would be available to any resident that was willing to apply for it and pay for it, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Okay, President Parker, I call for the vote.
Okay, alright, yes, ma'am, thank you, Council Smithman, Mr. Clark.
Councilmember Abbott.
Aye.
Councilmember Hillier.
Aye.
Councilmember Hoyt. Councilmember Hoyt.
Will you get that from me, please?
Okay.
Yes. Councilmember O'Quinn.
Yes.
Councilmember Smithman.
Aye.
Councilmember Williams. Councilmember Williams. Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Council President Pro Tim Alexander.
Aye.
Council President Parker.
Yes. Okay, alright, that item passes, and the next item, Mr. Clark, please.
Item fourteen, a resolution assenting to the vacation of fifteen hundred square feet of alleyway that is located parallel to and between Second Avenue North and Third Avenue North and perpendicular to and between Twenty-Fifth Street North and Caraway Boulevard, located at twenty-three sixteen Second Avenue North, on behalf of B T T Group LLC. So that the owner can consolidate property in the hearing of all parties, case number S U B two thousand and twenty dash sixty-five. Uh, again, this is a public hearing item. Any persons who wish to speak for or against this item may do so by joining the meeting of the full council, using the link provided. Please use the hand raise function on WebEx to request to speak to this agenda item. The audio conference number is one four one five six five five zero 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 two. And the access code is one eight seven five five four eighty-six thirty-five. If you're calling via telephone, please press star three to request to speak to this agenda item, motion, please.
So move.
Second.
Okay.
Okay. Council Smithman.
Is the applicant here? Or is the applicant present? Is there anybody on the call who wants to speak for or against this? Are there any councils that have any questions?
Councilor Smithman.
Yes.
Is someone with their hand raised on the call?
Okay, um, I can't see.
We'll tell them. Now, they've called in on the phone.
Okay.
Yes, uh, excuse me, can y'all hear me?
Yeah, can you state your name?
Yes, certainly, uh, I'm, I'm Joseph Miller, I'm Civil Engineer Land Surveyor that prepared the plat. And I'd be glad to answer any questions, uh, actually. They, they own both sides of the alley and they would just like to be able to use, use the entire alley as, as a yard, you know, it, it would still be in the.
Okay, thank you. Are there any councils with any questions? Okay.
Yes, Councilor Smithman, uh, this is.
Yeah, sorry, Councilman.
Yeah, um, so I just wanna point out that, um, there's a few of these along that same corridor and, um, I definitely support this action. Uh, these alleys, uh, have become kind of a no-man's land. And, uh, in particular, you know, they tend to, um, collect litter. So, you know, having this, um, piece of property under responsibility of a, uh, owner that has property on either side would, uh, help in that regard, I think. So I support this, this action.
Thank you, Councilman. Is there anyone else? Okay, President Parker, I call for the vote.
Okay, thank you, yes, ma'am, alright, uh, Mr. Clark, we're ready.
Aye.
Councilmember Hillier.
Aye.
Councilmember Hoyt.
Yes.
Councilmember O'Quinn. Councilmember O'Quinn.
Yes.
Councilmember Smithman.
Aye.
Councilmember Williams.
Aye.
Councilmember Woods.
Aye.
Council President Pro Tim Alexander.
Aye.
Council President Parker.
Uh, yes, okay, that item passes.
Alright, um, looks like we'll go, um, before we go to seventeen, uh, you would need to do the budgetary item associated with seventeen.
Yeah, if you can just call them up both as companion.
I'll do three forty-five first. Item forty-five, in order to amend the capital fund budget for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one by appropriating one million five hundred thousand dollars to Insley High School Mixed Use Development Healthy Food Option. And then the issue that we have, um, Mr. Council President is, I need to do U C for seventeen. I was informed by legal that it is a permanent operation item, so when I call it up, I'll need to take that U C.
Okay, yes, sir.
For U C, I move for U C.
Okay, um, let me, let me read it right quick for you guys, one sec. Uh, Council, item number seventeen, in order to authorize the mayor to execute a redevelopment agreement with Zimmerman Properties S C L L C, a North Carolina limited liability company here and after uh, collectively referred to as a, uh, redeveloper, under which the redeveloped redevelop property known as the former Insley High School, located at twenty-three oh one Avenue J, Birmingham, for a mixed-use development, and the city shall convey the redevelopment properties to the redeveloper for a purchase price of fifty thousand dollars with the city that determine to be the use value of the redevelopment as defined in the Code of Alabama, section twenty-four dash two dash six. And shall further provide certain incentives in the form of a city grant up to one million five hundred thousand dollars in connection with the project provided for grant that will promote an economic development of the city. Constitutes a public purpose and is authorized by the consistent with and in furtherance of the objectives of the amendment number seven seventy-two. Um, motion for U C for this particular item.
I move for U C.
Councilmember Abbott.
Aye.
Councilmember Hillier. Councilmember Hillier. Councilmember Hoyt.
Aye, aye, I'm sorry, aye.
Councilmember Hoyt. Council, Councilmember Hoyt. Councilmember O'Quinn.
Yes.
Councilmember Smithman.
Aye.
Councilmember Williams.
Aye.
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Council President Pro Tim Alexander.
Aye.
Council President Parker.
Uh, okay.
And I said no.
Alright, okay. So, we can deal with forty-five, but we can't deal with seventeen today.
Okay, um, let's read, uh, forty-five, is that unanimous, or is it just a, that's just a?
Item for forty-five?
President Parker, we'll just, we'll just, we'll just ask that for that be delayed one week with that item.
So you just wanna have them both on at the same time next week?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Alright. Um.
Got a motion for it?
Mr. Clark, item forty-five, we'll just do a one-week delay on item forty-five.
Alright.
Second.
Uh, I missed the motion, who?
I made the motion to delay item forty-five dealing with the Zimmerman Properties.
And who's second? Who did the second? O'Quinn, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, uh, Councilmember Abbott.
Aye.
Councilmember Hillier.
Aye.
Councilmember Hoyt. Councilmember Hoyt. Councilmember O'Quinn.
Yes.
Councilmember Smithman.
Aye.
Councilmember Williams.
Aye.
Councilmember Woods.
Aye.
Council President Pro Tim Alexander.
Aye.
Council President Parker.
Aye.
Uh, Councilmember Hoyt, is he present? Yes. How would you like to vote, sir?
Which, which item is this?
We're delaying the item number forty.
Yes.
Alright.
Okay, so both of them will come back up next week, seventeen and forty-five will come back up next week. Is that correct, Mr. Clark?
Yes, sir.
Okay, alright, okay, alrighty, um, there are other items, Mr. Clark, we need to deal with.
I don't.
Present.
Yeah, I'm hoping that, uh, somebody could give me some, uh, greater details on this, on these two items. And if they choose to do that now or later, that's fine.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. Councilboy, we hear you, we'll follow back up with the mayor, make sure team members provide you with that detail, sir.
Right, I am the patient, uh, counsel for this district.
Okay, alright, thank you. Um, Mr. Clark, are there other, is this, are those all the items?
That's all I see, sir.
Okay, alrighty, um, we will, Councilor Abbott, I know you have a, an announcement dealing with the committee and anybody else in the world.
The next, yes, thank you, Mr. President. The next virtual budget and finance meeting will be held on April second, two thousand twenty-one at three thirty P M. Um, submissions are due by April seventh, two thousand twenty-one at noon. There are no exceptions. Uh, the acceptable and approved process, I think, is well-known by now. And any items that are submitted beyond the deadline will be placed on the next budget and finance agenda. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, okay. Other announcements on meetings, on committee meetings only? If not, okay, uh.
Mr. President.
Okay, yes, sir.
Real quick on the committee meeting, uh, public safety is not going to be, uh, held today. Uh, there was not enough items on the agenda for, for us to, uh, hold it, so we're going to, um, um, forward those, uh, that liquor license to the full council. Um, and we will have the neighborhood forum uh, on that, uh, so everybody should be able to have a clear understanding of where vice sits on that.
Okay.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir, Councilboy, are you good with that?
Uh, yes, I'm, I'm fine with that, um.
Okay.
I, I just wanted to, um, express my, um, condolences to the Yarvo family, uh, certainly to those persons who, um, have been victimized by gun violence, uh, notwithstanding any of the other persons that, uh, been succumbed, um, to date, uh, by, by gun violence. Um, I don't know what kind of society we live in, quite frankly. And, you know, and I know we can't legislate morals and values, and people have to have some sense of worth uh, when it comes to another person's life. Um, but I don't know why do, uh, these young folk just think they can just shoot in, in a park that's full of people and, and, and not have any consequences? You know, um, and then for these folk to not even want to even uh, say who it was, uh, says something about, um, this culture that we're in. And, um, and I'm just, you know, my heart is, is really heavy. Uh, because, uh, this young lady had a whole life in front of her. And then for her life to be slept out like that. And I want to say, um, and I, and I feel your, your pain too, as, as a council for that district, um, that encompasses the park. But it's a sad day when not even the parks are safe. You know, these are places that generally, um, there's gatherings, and, you know, we've lost others, we've lost others to, um, to, uh, you know, gun violence with respect to parks, uh, and around Easter. You know, we have a history. And there was another young lady that lived in my district some years ago, um, lost her life in George Ward's Park, it was on Easter. And so we know that Easter is a day that people go to parks. And I'm not suggesting that we have police inside the park, but at least on the perimeters. And so that people understand that when they come to the park and partake in the parks, that, um, that, that, you know, there's a sense of safety, safety there. And I just want to see us, uh, increase our presence, I don't think you need to be in the park, but at least around the perimeters of the park, because, you know, that, and that's not quality of life either, to just to have police, uh, you know, when you got to play, and when you got to do those kinds of things, uh, uh, have a picnic with your family, it's just not fair. Um, but I do want to send my condolences to this family. And certainly want to express my concern uh, to you as the, uh, the patron council of that district.
Yes, sir, thank you, thank you. Um, the park board will be meeting tomorrow, so there'll be more conversations and more, um, plans, I think, rolled out, uh, or anticipation of that on tomorrow, so I'm sure we'll be receiving more follow-ups, um, from the park board and other, uh, and, and on, on some next steps. So, all righty, um, with that, uh, any other announcements about committee meetings only? Uh, and if not, I will recognize Council Williams.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
You seem to be good at that. Do something, boy.
Only favor let it be known.
Aye. Aye.
Okay, all right, thank you all. Everyone continue to be safe, thank you.